He's directly involved.
If he wants to.
Sure.
Come up and state your name and your address for the record, please.
Jonathan Jenk and I'll give six one six Bradford Street representing to County Chamber Development Partnership. And I appreciate you bringing up this topic, said I think it's important. I'll, I'll start off by saying I, I think it is a balancing act as we think about economic development in general. I think the ability to make decisions fairly quickly while also trying to be good prudent stewards of taxpayer dollars is, it's a, it's an important kind of balancing act that I think we, we have to consider. I would give kudos to the current LBA forty committee from a practical standpoint of the loans that they've given over the years. To my knowledge, we don't have a default on the books from a loan standpoint. I think Greg has stated this before, that's, I don't know any other municipality that has that sort of a track record. And so I think practically speaking, I think they've been making good decisions, they have been good stewards of, of the LBA forty dollars. And that, that's kudos to, to that committee. But I think it is a balancing act again, when I, when I've been thinking about this, you know, since I, I knew it was gonna be on the committee or on the agenda tonight. Economic development in general and, and practically speaking, the projects that have come across our docket have not been things that we've had to make decisions immediately. So I think there has been some time to, to, to consider them deeply. But practically, if you have a committee like it is set up now, if we needed to make a decision fairly quickly, let's say from an incentive standpoint, just to use an example for, from a recruitment perspective, that, that could be incredibly helpful from a, from a speed of decision making to, to make that decision. While at the same time needing to be prudent. You know, practically speaking, I know that there are other municipalities that, that have the city council as a final decision maker. And so I realize that's a balance. I, I think the current system has, is again, from a track record standpoint, has worked well. And I think is intending or it's helping the intended recipients to follow the plan that we have in, in place as, as Kelly alluded to. And so, and I think there is a, a little bit of a balancing act there from a, a ability to make decisions that are, are timely. At the same time, trying to be good stewards and I, I think we're achieving both of those currently as I, as I analyze it.
Well, and you do, I mean, and I, I, if I recall, I believe there are committees that, yes, it goes to the council, but I think it is more or less in some cases, a consent agenda type item where they can approve it. They don't necessarily have a whole nother hearing or, or debate on it, but there are, I think some that do. So it's kind of like, cause everyone kind of does it their own way. And, you know, part of, I think, part of the, from the practical standpoint of, you know, if you go to an LBA forty meeting where there is a, a back and forth with the board and the applicant about, uh, term, the, the terms are more or less spelled out now as far as the formula, but as far as the dollar amount and, and so, so forth. I think you do run the risk of, I guess, convolving the process. If they go through that process, LBA forty, and then have, and they basically do the whole thing over again with the council. Do they renegotiate everything again? You know, I don't know how that would work exactly. And so I guess there, that was my only concern is, is creating another layer, cause I know, I mean, you're, as far as transparency, I don't know that there's anything opaque about the current process, but it would add another layer to that process to going to the council, which I don't know if it's good or bad, it's just the reality is that would be what would happen.
Yeah, and, and Mary, I think you stated that well. And that, that's kind of my thought processes, what I, I don't think would be helpful is if we basically created another negotiation process. I don't think that's gonna be helpful for businesses, they consider basically the gap financing tool that, that it is intended to be to help.
How does that differ from TIF?
Or CBG.
Okay, so, yeah, okay, so, okay, Ellen, you're right, I actually forgot about CBG, cause we don't really use it that much anymore.
I didn't mention that.
Yeah, I forgot, see, we, we, at one point, the state didn't like the way CBG funds were being administered, so we backed off until they kind of got that figured out. So we technically do have a CBG fund, it's just not being utilized as much anymore. So thanks for reminding me of that. The difference between TIF processes is that the, the TIF attorney more or less puts together that, that agreement, that redevelopment agreement. And so within there, you know, they'll say, okay, here's a fifteen year term is pretty standard. And then the, based on the calculations of what the proposed property taxation valuation would be compared to what it currently is. All of those calculations are done by the TIF attorney, who then presents that to the, the CRA. I actually believe it goes to the planning commission first, doesn't it?
CRA, planning commission, city council.
Okay, so there's actually three levels of that. But there, the terms are already laid out in the agreement. There's no negotiation as far as, it's, it's, it's gonna be fifteen years and the calculation dictates how, what the amount of that TIF loan will be. So there's no discretion from the, from the board's standpoint as it moves through the process. It's just more of an approval of, do you like this, is this a good use, do you wanna go forward with this?
But there is a negotiation piece, because we just had it when we talked about Thomas and what we can require this, this, or this, or this.
Well, and that's something that we haven't, yeah, we, we haven't done that yet as far as those proposals. You always have that ability to do that, I mean, council observes that, oh, obviously. But, yeah, we have not, as far as in the past, put stipulations on, on the TIF piece. There are instances where you could cap it, for example, but typically, that's mostly driven by the TIF attorney's recommendation going forward. But yeah, there, there are ways you could tweak it, but we typically haven't done that yet.
Hard numbers are set for TIF.
So if, if we.
Like the loan terms, I mean, it's fifteen years and the dollar amounts generated by the valuation estimate.
So if, if we were to tweak the, our, our LBA forty plan, we could put in place a set of rules. Like if you have this much equity to bring into it, you qualify for this much grant, you know? I mean, we, we could come up with our own set of, we could take a lot of the, well, we really like you, so we're gonna get to, give you this amount of money. Or we really think that you're, you, this is a great idea, we could make it more just black and white. Where this is what the project could bring in, this is how much money they have upfront, this is the equity in the building, what, whatnot. So we could make it a lot more.
Yeah, you make it as rigid as you, or, as you want. The problem you run into potentially is the reason, and, and Kelly kind of alluded to this, the statutes are very broad. And they're very broad, yeah.
Keep in mind, you do have the citizen advisory review committee that reports to this council every six months.
And that's, and that's on top of everything else, so, yeah. So you want a layered process, that's, that's kind of the poster child for layered processes. But, um, I lost my train of thought.
Well, Mary, I'll just quickly add that the LBA forty committee does have guidelines that they have. I mean, I know that they've spent a considerable amount of time and that, you know, I think either council member could speak.
Yeah, and then, why would you say is, the, the risk that you run is that it's, it's vague in many aspects on purpose so that, cause there are so many different types of redevelopment projects that could come forward. And, and part of the concern, I think, from a legislative standpoint was if we're too rigid, you're gonna have this great project, but it's not gonna technically check all the boxes and then you're gonna have to pass on it. And so that's why it is very vague and there is a lot of discretion from the LBA forty board on those, on those projects. And the fact that that's all they do, they're able to specialize and spend the time preparing for that. And I don't wanna speak, we have council members on there, did you wanna add anything as far as that goes?
Let me just update you on what kind of we've, we've been doing, Carl, chime in here, please, help me out. We've decided to go ahead and start meeting more regularly at set times so that we just stay abreast of things and we have a better idea of where our monies are. We are taking closer look at how the funding is going in. We've pushed back away from grants and are more into loans that are paid back at half prime or a forgivable loan over a period of time. And Carl crunches numbers for us. But you're right, you know, people come up there and I think you've gone through this process and, and they spill out their hearts to us. And we're sitting there uncomfortably looking at every financial detail of their life for the last, God only knows how many years. And you have to do it, you don't wanna pry, but you've got to be able to look at those and say, this business is, is solvent, it's going forward, it's making a profit, it's going to create jobs, and it's a very good candidate for these loans. And we do that, Marilyn has the, the paperwork for us here every, every night before the meeting or we can go in and look in at city hall during the day. So all that is available. So we're going to be meeting more regularly, we definitely have the paperwork there, people go ahead and do the due diligence as far as, as vetting the business owners. But they do come and they discuss it with us and we're looking for, you know, a lot of times we're looking for not only financial, but what are they bringing to the community besides jobs, are they becoming an integral part of this community? And the business people who sit on the committee are very interested in that. And they, and you're having business people making decisions for other business people. And I kind of think that's nice, because it's their vested best interest that we go ahead and invest in these businesses. They're, you know, rooting for them to succeed. So, you know, I think that we are well aware of criticism of LBA forty and some of the decisions that we've made. And I've not agreed with every one of them, but I certainly respect every single person on that committee and the, and the input that they give. I think it's invaluable. And we come to a conclusion and we agree and then we move on. But there are times too, and we have two or three applicants and we have a limited pot of money, we have to make some decisions as to who gets what. And for example, we ran out of time at our last meeting, you all kind of filed in and you saw the last of it. But we asked, um, the Fury Building developers, we would, we would have let, literally sat there and crunched numbers with Carl on his computer and us trying to figure out load for another hour. But we asked him to go ahead and, and kind of do that with, with Greg and with, with Jonathan and come back to us. Because we do get into that granular level of consideration as far as these project goes. And I've had, talking with Jonathan at length and I've talked with Greg, what we would like from those two basically is a very good thorough scrubbing of every single company's ability to pay back the loan, what they're going to do with it, what the financials are, besides our own due diligence of looking at the financial reports ourselves. So, you know, I, we're gonna look toward Greg and we're gonna look toward Jonathan to say yea or nay, or they've already told this person, you know, you don't meet this requirement, you're not going to be able to do this with LBA forty before it even gets to us. So we've got layers of, of due diligence built in beyond what we're doing ourselves.
No, and I agree with everything Ellen just said. I think the main thing with LBA forty that, in my opinion, is different from TIF is it's not stringent. It does have a more, um, open interpretation to certain situations and its needs versus just meeting the checklist and then sending it through. Like I said, it could have a place where it's a great project and we can have the funds to push this over the edge. But if it doesn't meet a check box, we don't wanna have that go through. This might not be the best, in my opinion, be the best for LBA forty to where if we do have funds and can push it over the hill, we wanna push it over the hill. I think we're coming into this year more, we've seen a vast array of different applications over the last couple of years, ranging from, you know, just loans through loan grant percentages. I think in, we're getting close to where, um, in, in my opinion, that we want to keep replenishing the fund over and over without depleting the fund or just completely sending grant monies out there and not putting it back into the fund, cause it kind of defeats the purpose of having that fund available. But at the same time, I wanna leave it open, just that if there is a situation where we would have that option to grant that money, if it would be something that's beneficial to the community itself, that's still an option on the table as well. So, um, I think the last meeting, we kind of came up with a, a simple structure on loan slash forgivable loan that would still replenish and add a little bit back to the pool, but still at the same time, give some forgiveness to the, to the loan in the long term as well, so I think.
As opposed to a straight grant.
As opposed to a straight grant. So it would still be, uh, going through the amortization process up to the end of, of the loan where there's a specific amount set to that. So I think it's still getting fine tuned without being black and white on paper. But at the same time, like Ellen has also agreed to, we have Greg and Jonathan does go through and work with him on this. And I don't necessarily think that he needs to be as stringent on telling them who can, can apply, because I think he's the one that should be opening the door for people to come in and bring it to us to where we're the ones that need to make the decision on what we're comfortable with and how we wanna structure that as a committee.
The only complaint I've, I'm sorry, the only complaint I've ever have heard from the public was, was not what the outcome of, of a meeting was, but it was the application itself came in and people were reacting to what they saw as the ask. And the ask was so high as far as maybe a grant. And that's, if you wanna call it the coffee shop talk, was, oh my gosh, this person got a hundred thousand dollar grant or eight thousand dollar grant. And that wasn't what ended up happening, it might have been in their initial application. And so if you actually looked at the results of, of the board's actions, um, it's been fairly consistent on, on that end for the most part. Uh, and they have tightened some of the screws when it comes to some of these other issues, but I had several hands. I had Chris and then Alyssa and Uncle Sid.
Say, Carl, you just had kind of addressed the whole loan versus grant scenario, which was really the issue and the issue before these two council members were even on the board. I remember Josh, it was the summer when you came and addressed.
I don't show up very often, but once in a while I make an appearance.
And that's, and that's the concern and it happened, I mean, the issue has happened at the, your last meeting, where we don't have the funds for projects that are valid. So, uh, you know, the concern of a approval from the council standpoint, and I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but maybe an attempt to get a grasp on dollars that being granted versus loaning dollars. And if we get back to more of a forgivable loan, to keep the fund replenished and have funds there for projects to be done, that's the direction we need to go. There was also, I'm gonna tell me if I'm wrong, the, the other piece of this with LBA forty is not job creation part of LBA forty and, and the purpose behind it and gap financing. And we had this scenario again this summer, I think the same night you gave your little spiel to the, to the committee. But we had somebody here trying to give money just cause he saw it as a cash cow, it's a place to go get money. He completely could have done this project on his own and said so, that he didn't need the money, but everybody else is getting money, give me money. And that's a piece that I challenged, I challenged, I challenged the board to really dig in whoever it is, looking at stuff and what truly is it from, I can't do this without it, I'm creating jobs, this is my gap financing, I can't do it without it versus, hey, it's just a place that I can help ease my own pain and get some money.
You need to get a loan.
Yeah.
I mean, you got a loan.
Yeah, I don't remember how it turned out.
But that, and that's one of the reasons why getting away from the grants.
Exactly.
It, it, that problem solves itself, because then they're not applying for just a hundred percent grant, uh, it's only a process, Alyssa.
What's the process of following up afterwards? So you've given a, like here to one person for a feasible study. Okay, so, but you've given out some of these grants or whatever, okay? So there's like a twenty five thousand dollar grant here and a twenty five thousand dollar grant here. Is there a follow-up or right here there was another twenty because they were moving businesses to a new location? Are you doing any follow-up afterwards so that they have to turn in, you know, like we do with TIF? You have to turn in what that money is going towards as opposed to, I'm gonna go down to Mexico for three weeks and thanks for your twenty thousand dollar grant. Like, do you guys do a follow-up basis like that or?
That could be a yes or no question.
Well, yeah.
The answer is I closed one today, for instance, LBA forty just approved Campbell Cleaning, forty thousand dollars. There's a specific term in the loan agreement documents in the note that require that if we're putting it towards working capital or business acquisition, that we receive verification of what you're using if it goes to it. So when I advised them today, I said, I wanna see your per, copy of your purchase agreement, I also wanna see that the deed transferred and that the money actually went towards what it, what was stated it went for. So there's a term in those loan agreements that require that. If there was a dedicated job element, that follows up in the quarterly reports that are filed with Marilyn that are reviewed by the CERC. We also have, uh, different elements, it just, it just depends on what they're coming in for. Again, working capital's hard, cause it's working capital. It's just cash infusing their business so that they can continue to do or get up and running. I mean, obviously, we go and verify their business and they're up and running. I think between me and Jonathan, we're working very closely with these businesses. They're the ones that you just note that they're making their payments and they're.
Alyssa, were you asking more about a gra- a grant?
I think it is any of it, really, I mean, if they can make their loan payment, then, okay, cool. But if you're just gonna give out a grant.
And that's one of the reasons why we've been pushing.
Right.
To get away from it.
And it kind of sounds like that's done now, but like, I would.
It hasn't been.
Kind of what, you know, if you've got a couple out here that are, you know, fifty thousand dollars, like here's fifty thousand dollars.
But like, for example, the biggest.
Four page PowerPoint and.
Right, well, and, and, and we have had some that came in, have, along, well, this has been many years, but like a, some feasibility study where they had no skin in the game, they wanted us to pay for it. We've gotten away from that as well. The largest grant that I'm aware of was actually approved before I was mayor was to Tenneco, when they expanded Tenneco. And we're talking hundreds of jobs, uh, that they brought in and I think that was a hundred thousand dollar grant on there. But I'm not, there was, other than an oversized check that I signed, cause I always wanna end up giving it to them after we became mayor. There, there's no, like, there, I'm not wearing strings attached, other than the jobs had, once they hit that job mark or whatever the, it was in it was, here you go. And that's also how the state does a lot of their incentive programs, like, uh, Advantage Act, which is based on job creation. Is you show them you hit that job threshold, here's your, here's your money, the next threshold, here's your money. So that's how they typically handle those situations. So we're trying to be more, um, again, find that balance of, we want the program to be flexible enough, so we're not requiring, there's, there aren't like, like with TIF, you have TIF eligible expenses, so they have to meet certain criteria. With this, there aren't LBA forty eligible expenses per se, it just has to, I mean, it has to fit the, the project, right?
There's a qualifying business and a qualifying activity by state law.
Right, but, but as far as like, can you buy staples with it or?
Yeah. Once you put it under working capital, let's be honest, working capital's almost nearly anything, so.
And, and I wouldn't wanna say that we're never gonna give out a grant, because there may be interest, instances, like you say, where, that incentivizes that we may wanna do a small grant or to, you know, just close that gap a little bit faster for them. So it's not that we're never gonna do it, um, but it will be, you know, up to the, the vote of the committee and it would have to, you know.
And the funds have to. The funds have to be there.
And the funds have to be there. And it's not like we don't have any money in the fund, but we seem to get, and I guess this is one also another reason why we wanted to continue to meet more regularly, is we tend to get bunches and then all of a sudden it sort of wipes out the whole fund. And then we sit there and cross our fingers that if it replenish itself before another bunch comes in. So we were hoping that if we met more regularly, people would kind of get in the groove and we would have these spaced out a little bit better.
And going to loans also helps with that as well, because the money, even if it were, is in the end, a more or less zero percent interest loan because of how you're giving some and whatnot, um, at least you get the principal back. And so that makes, that keeps the fun going as well. We're adding a hundred fifty thousand a year into it, but, um, the more that gets revolved through that and back into it, it helps, because you don't know what projects are gonna come up and, you know, if you're gonna bring in two hundred jobs and, you know, a hundred thousand dollars is necessarily a bad investment, especially for a company established like Tenneco. Yeah, there's another point that I'm gonna say.
Well, does that one fifty come from the city that goes and supports it or the sales tax?
Yeah, so originally, there was around oh two, I wanna say-ish, they passed the initial plan for LBA forty and that was seventy five thousand dollars of sales tax went into this fund. And then around twelve or thirteen, we did a special election when, then the plan was renewed. And then, so we added a half cent sales tax to that. And then of the half cent sales tax, another seventy five thousand was then allocated to this program. So there's a total of a hundred fifty thousand a year, but then, of course, anything that can, that evolves back in through the loans, it gets added to that. And, you know, to the credit, you know, there haven't been any defaults that I'm aware of on those loans and, which is pretty unusual, cause they're meant to be somewhat risky. I mean, we don't, we, you know, philosophically too, most communities, they don't wanna compete with the banks. They won't, don't wanna be like another loan officer where the bank, you know, it's like, well, I don't wanna go to the bank, cause I can go here. Ideally, it's what Chris talks about, like gap financing, which isn't always the case. But they go to the bank and they can get a sixty thousand dollar loan, but they're twenty thousand short of what they need. The bank's maybe not comfortable extending that much, well, we can come in and perhaps look at that and say, okay, we can do an extra twenty thousand dollars or whatever, we needed to make, to get that to where they need to be. And so ideally, we, the program is supplementing the economic development already taking place through financial institutions, especially local ones, like local community banks. And so that's where we're trying to, to find that, fit that in that role. And, and, and again, some communities are, are, are different in how they approach it, but that's, and so far, it just seems to be working just because TIF is great if you're gonna do a new build, cause you get the, the added value of tearing down something and building something new. TIF doesn't work real well for a remodel necessarily, you just don't see that large increment, cause you put a lot of money into a building and not see the value necessarily go up to match that. And so LBA forty is available to do those kinds of projects where it's an expansion of an existing business or a remodel or a co-compliance type situation, where TIF doesn't make sense, but this fund's available and might make sense, so. Does that help? Yeah, Sid?
Yes, it helps. Um, just a question, since we have three attorneys in the room.
At least. We might be pulling, we don't know.
I gotta do.
We don't ask.
I gotta be grand.
I stayed at a hall of thanks, trust me.
Anyway, so, short of like changing the plan, it sounds like, like Carl, the way you were mentioning is you guys are still kind of tweaking the way you administer it. Okay, so, for the lawyers in the room, the plan allows tweaking in the way it is administered, apparently, cause it is.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty limited to the way the plan allows for you to do.
Here's what I would say, is the plan, the plan explicitly noted what, who the final approving one is, but it does, for instance, the guidelines, the guidelines are, they're not stepping on any toes that the plan outlines. The plan doesn't, you know, what's the.
A loan must be five years, it doesn't say that.
Yeah, it doesn't lay out the terms and so they're able to fill that in, so they dictate amongst themselves those guidelines, which are elements of the plan that don't exist. And so they can fill that in and they try to use those guidelines as ways to direct themselves.
The guidelines do not exist in the plan, is what.
Nope. The guidelines for the structure of like the loan or whatever.
So, so where I'm going with this is.
We have guidelines.
And were those guidelines driven by the voters in the plan?
No, the guidelines were approved by the committee, because that was our job.
Right, so then this is where I'm going with this, with the lawyers is, short of having to change everything at the plan level, like with the, with an election and everything, why couldn't this governing body make some very strong recommendations on how the plan should be implemented? Without it being, crossing any lines as far as state statute or the plan? What I'm saying is, is if, if the committee is the ones that can kind of decide how it's implemented, does the governing body have the ability to, to very strongly suggest that you should only grant this much percentage of your revenue, you know, of the money? You know what I'm saying, without having to change the whole system?
Define the disbursement process.
Yeah, how can this committee work together with the governing body to, to implement some of our concerns as a governing body without having to go through the whole process of going, putting it before an election and everything? And that, that's a question for you guys.
Well, I would defer to Kelly.
I think you can give that feedback every six months to the citizen's advisory review committee.
The review coming here.
And you do have two council members on.
Right, I understand.
On there as well.
Right, right.
I don't know as far as, I, I would defer to Kelly, cause I, I mean, this is a unique entity, because of the way it's structured, that if, do we draw a parallel between the fact that the, the LBA forty committee has the final say? Is that mean that the final say all matters before, you know, as far as your, your issue? Or can the council come in and, and dictate a change in, in procedure that's not outlined already in state law? And I, I would defer to Kelly, cause I don't know how, and Kelly doesn't wanna give an answer right now, but. But I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I, I, we'd have to probably research that, because I don't, I don't know, the level of autonomy, I don't know.
Sure. Well, I was just gonna add and correct it from wrong, so then we changed some things. I mean, we as a, the council here still approve the appointments to that committee, you know? Yeah. So if you don't like what they're doing, when they come up for it, cause they'll just put them back on, don't, don't put them back on.
Oh, I understand that.
Yeah.
Do you wanna turn the page?
Oh, sure.
And I, I mean, would, like when you addressed the LBA forty committee, that, the one meeting.
I think if there would be something to where, if it wants to be addressed here and then brought back to the committee, I don't see how that would be, as long as it's not a stringent dictate on this is what's gonna happen or not, it's a, it's a recommendation.
I think Sid, we use the language strongly suggests, I mean, you're welcome to make suggestions, whether it's to, uh, to Greg or myself or to your representatives on, on those types of matters. I would just, as a general rule, um, it's fine, again, I use the word balance a lot tonight. You know, I initially, initially it seemed like the committee was sort of having a hard time finding its way as far as being consistent. And one of the things that we talked about was, well, what interest rate do we wanna use? Because I, my point was, I don't have to explain why this applicant who was approved twenty minutes before this applicant got a quarter percent lower interest rate than that applicant. I don't, I don't wanna have to be in that position and it's hard to explain. So we said, well, let's just, so my recommendation was come up with. So we said, well, let's just, so my recommendation was come up with a formula. And so the, the committee settled on half a prime. Prime, anyone can find out what prime rate is, you, I mean, it's public, it's not a secret. At the meeting, when it's approved, whatever prime happens to be that night or that day, then it's half a prime and it's, there's no, so that is a sense that discretion was removed, but it was removed in, in the, in the, for the reason of creating consistency so that everyone's being treated the same. Uh, but like the terms of the loans are, are more or less negotiated, right? They're decided?
Generally fifteen years.
Yeah, which is what TIF is.
Kinda stick to, but again, people might say, well, I wanna pay it off in ten and we're fine with that too. But, you know, everybody's gonna come in with different circumstances. And the flexibility in, in how we go through our own, uh, protocols and our own decision-making is, we try and make it as much as possible for them to be able to do this. You know, we, we err the side of getting them be able to be able to do it, so. Especially if they're creating jobs and they, you know, they gotta stand in the community, that's really important to us.
So, so moving forward, I would just suggest writing down what specific issues that you've identified and what your suggestions would be, and then start with either Greg or myself. And Greg's the administrator for the, the LBA forty committee. And then you have two council members and see if that gets you where you wanna be. And if, if they tell you to go pound Sam, then we can talk about some more, but I don't know.
I, I, I encourage everyone to come to a meeting once, not all of you at the same time, at least, please, but.
Quarter time, quarter time.
You know, it's, it's an interesting process to watch and, and, you know, you learn a lot.
Yep. Are you, are you any other caution comments?
A lot as far as getting to understand.
Thank you.
Okay, there's also no action on number nine, so we'll move on to number ten, which is city administration report. Greg?
Um, my administrative report is in there. Uh, we have a few open houses coming up. We're gonna do an open house on January ninth at the library for the cop plan before it's heard again by planning and zoning and the city council. So I'm just gonna sit in the library with my laptop and some apps. And if people wanna come in and talk with me, I'll be available for about four hours.
When is it?
Uh, January ninth.
When is the, um, trail one?
The tenth.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
Thursday the tenth. Middle school, yep, Thursday the tenth, so there's another night. You can hang out with me and talk about stuff.
Hundreds of people there.
Um, so that's coming up. As councilman mentioned, we'll have the open house for the bike trail and the Waverly Road project congruently at the middle school on the tenth that evening. Um, other than that, just continue on working through projects. And, uh, I think one of the big ones right now is finishing up, uh, DTR applications and approvals, get people rolling on that. Me and Kelly worked on that over the last week or so, bouncing agreements and stuff back and forth to finalize that. Give notice proceeds here hopefully this week. Uh, the last one, uh, one and six-year road plan. Jake's been really digging deep into that, so that's gonna be a big one coming up here in the next two months. Uh, send that public hearing and discussing that with you, cause, uh, that will all be handled internally. We have no assistance this year from J E O. So, lots of things in there for you guys to look at and consider.
Questions or comments for Greg?
Is there a motion to accept the report?
One question, I'm sorry. At the trail, who's gonna be presenting?
It's, it's just an open house style, walk around the, there's some information there. Um, I know that the engineers, and Shimmer is actually the engineer for both of those projects. So Shimmer will have people available and, uh, I don't know that it'll be a formal presentation since it's so long. We don't want people to miss it, so you come in, you look at things and then you can ask questions and point at boards and do that kind of thing.
Sounds good, thank you.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Motion in a second, to adjust your votes, please weigh the votes.
Very welcome back, Heather, Chris, Miller, Smith, Henry, something.
Are there future requests for council agenda items or administrative action?
I have just a comment.
Yeah.
So for those of you who are interested, Ellen or myself will definitely be there on Monday night. But, uh, Jake is going to present at the Parks and Rec, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, it's on the agenda, uh, water issues on the golf course. He's gonna review that, so if you're interested in being there, Sid might be there, so. I plan on being there.
There's no liaison.
No other liaison.
There's no other requests or, for items? Okay, and then next we have upcoming events, Jonathan?
Yes, uh, annual awards banquet at Starman's on Monday, uh, January twenty-first. And so we'd appreciate if you'd consider attending. It's a great opportunity to celebrate, uh, business success, community success, volunteer of the year, uh, a number of other projects that we'll be celebrating. And so appreciate the consideration to participate on the twenty-first.
Great, thank you, Jonathan. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay.
Motion in a second, to adjust your votes. Please weigh the votes. Thank you, have a great night and a happy new year.